... Roll call, Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Floyd here, Ms. Craig. Chair is here, Mr. Osowski.
Hello.
Craig here, Ms. Robinson here. I want to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for attending. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for making the long drive to Redford. You had lovely weather for everything. Mr. Witt? Do you present your remarks?
I can hear you.
You need to trace them.
I can hear you, Mr. Witt. Are you muted or anything? No, he's not muted. Oh, we have to kind of... Hold on. Hold on. We're going to turn it up a little bit. How about that? Now? Now, sorry.
I want you to like unmute now. But good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a few minutes to wish everyone a very happy Easter holiday and to acknowledge the significant efforts of our support staff, our teachers, our administrators, again, staff across the entire district for all the time this entire school year to get us to this point. Please report that we've been having success with our hiring person format. We turned to the morning. And now, finally, spring break is here. I just wanted to wish everybody another happy Easter. This is the very last day of having all these big spring break. And we're looking forward to having schools to turn back to building next year into the first phase of school building and save the students and hoping that this is a staff who has shown the love of the day for my district, our families, all of that as well. And again, just thank you from out of my heart to all our staff members, all of you who've been doing well this entire school year. But especially since we've changed to interpersonal and I know that as having your allowance between the students and students personally and interpersonal, and I know that it's always in touch. And I just thank you all for your dedication.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda on March 29th, 2021? Special meeting is presented. So moved, second. Moved by Mr. Osowski, second by Ms. Floyd. There's any discussion. All those in... Okay, Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Floyd?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Crybor?
Yes.
Ms. Craig, we're voting to adopt the agenda.
I vote yes. Thank you.
Motion here. Call to the audience for your special meeting. They're already on at this time. Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
That's me.
That is you.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me, myself and Ben who's coming around tonight. We appreciate it. So we're here to talk about applicants' interview questions. So I have given all of you a copy of the interview questions, so you should have those there in front of you. We are looking at selecting approximately 18, 19 questions or so from this list for you to ask our candidates. And the list is derived from what we consider to be appropriate ifhand real-based questions based on not only the types of things that you think board needs in all of those incoming candidates, but then also talking about some of the things that were in your selection criteria that you had, you know, curiosity because I want to make sure that those candidates brought those things to the... you know, to the application as well. So that's kind of where the questions are coming from. So what I'd like to do is kind of work our way through the list here so that we have an idea of the questions that we're going to ask. And then I can put together an interview guide and then I would present that interview guide to all of you. Absolutely. Okay. So any questions about the interview questions and interview guides or anything along those lines? Yes?
Um, I don't know, maybe this seems redundant, but there's no question of why do you want to work here?
Well, we can definitely add questions that we go to. If you don't think that... if there's something that we don't think is being addressed, we can definitely add that as you were doing this last week.
Okay.
Yep. These are not the end-all-be-all. This is a starting point. And if it's not something in here that I just address, I have an entire bag of questions that probably we shouldn't even... so maybe we can find something that is appropriate for all that. But yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask why did you smart, like, you know, choice ahead of time so that we could have read them at home and then come back and say, "I would like this question," and that question?
So it's nice to have a discussion amongst all of you as a board so we can all come to a decision as a board and throw a question if you like. And we, you know, this kind of tidies it up a little bit. So I have the questions here in front of us all. You know, the questions, honestly, I mean, they're fairly basic. And I say that in a positive way. There are things we need to know, right? We need to know their experiences with curriculum. We need to know their experiences with budget finance. We need to know their experience with contract negotiations and working with unions, things like that. And so all these questions are going to be fairly, you know, basic. But they're giving at the things that we need to know, the things that we as a board need to know to make a decision as to do what we want to hear next year. And so, you know, there's a certain science to it, but it's not overly complicated science. We know that evidence of past success is a good predictor of future success. So if they, in their interviews, can reflect on a time when, in their job, they did something and were successful and can relay that to you, then that's a good indication that when they did their job, they're going to be successful in the decisions they made in the interview. And so that's what we're trying to get, okay? We're trying to hit at the successes they've had in the past so we know they've been successful with budget in the past. They've been successful with curriculum in the past. They've been successful raising test work in negotiating contracts in bond, right? Because you have a potential bond coming up. And so if you want to, you know, ask them about their experience with bonds and facilities and, you know, improvements to their district, things of that nature, we can ask them of that as well. And again, get a good indication as to their experience with that so you can make other decisions.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, you still going to answer Mrs. Crybor's question? Why didn't the board get this ahead of time?
This is the procedure that we find most effective. Bringing the questions to the entire board and going through the questions one by one and determining the questions that you as a board would like to ask of the candidate.
I just know personally, I would like to be given information that I have to read in this board meeting.
No.
Mostly doesn't like to sleep on it.
Yeah, just that's me personally. I think where you're at because I interview people in my job. And I do ask those kinds of questions to me about the time, you know, and tell me how this, you know, helps me or helps our company. And why do you want to work for, you know, my company? So I absolutely get... I just, I hate trying to do things while we need to make it, when we need to make a decision.
Absolutely. And what I can tell you is we're not making any definitive decisions on this tonight. I want to get an idea of where you are as a board on the questions. We will be able to continue to find two minutes. And, you know, we don't have interviews. Let's see. My calendar right here in front of me. We need to get a little bit off yet. So we get an idea of the questions that we're talking about tonight. I will put together an interview guide based on what the feedback that we get tonight and we get back and continue to find through that. So we don't have to necessarily nail it all down. But I'd like to just get us rolling in the right direction on this so that we know what we're working with and then we can continue to find through that. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So the first question here, number one, is fairly typical starting question. We have the opportunity to review your resume. Please sell your background, experience, link, and put it in here and send it over. Any significant questions that come to that as a starter?
I guess I think this is where it should be. Why do you want to be superintendent at a Redford community school?
Okay.
If you think it adds up. Like, I get why you want to be a good superintendent, but why you wouldn't call us a superintendent, you know?
Okay. All right. So in this question, it asks about your background, so I say you deserve to be our next superintendent. Are you... Would you like me to enhance that one a little bit to why you would like to be our next superintendent? Do you think that this doesn't quite get what they're asking?
Uh, yeah, I think something more specific to Redford community school district.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, the very first question I ask people when I interview them is why do you work here? Why do you want to refer on the brand?
Okay. I will play back this question and get that as a more definitive...
I'd just like to add in support for this change and really the reason and what the answer to the question, why you want to be here, what that reveals about a person, where is the superintendent experience. But I feel like you're unpacking that on all these different levels of Redford. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. All right. So in that section here, vision, questions two through five. First one is talking about an example of when you led a sustained improvement initiative. You specifically regarded the situation and asked your hand, you specifically wrote out one. So this could apply to a variety of things. This could apply to something like BOM, right? This could apply to something like a strategic plan of curriculum improvement, things of that nature. Question three talks about the striving situation which you maintain and enhance through unique cloud partnerships. Question four talks about management, vision, and purpose. And then question five talks about actually establishing a vision for your school district or processes to follow. Anything in here jump out at you that is something that you like to sign?
I like questions number two and four. As well, I like questions two and four.
I like two and four. And then possibly add a layer, maybe in a fact review. Three.
All right. So I'm hearing some support for two and four. Okay? All right. Six and seven are around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Number six, shared situation demonstrates your ability to create a climate in which diversity is the norm for your experience in working in diverse communities. Number seven talks about how specifically the superintendent supports teachers in meeting diversity needs. Anything in here?
I like six.
I'm curious if others feel this way. I would be interested in a question here about equity. Sorry, what? Equity? I can't hear you.
Equity?
Yeah, within the diversity, equity, inclusion, a question that's not listed above I'd be interested in is around their experience with, like, decreasing referrals or, like, divergent records or experiencing using restored justice practices. I don't know if others would also be interested in any sort of those specifics being part of a DEI question. And I also like question six overall.
I like question six, but I agree we do need to address the equity question. The diversity and equity are different. And we'll sort of work around restored practices. So I don't know if we need to form a question number 6.5.
Yep. Nope, there you are. All right. So something on the first address is equity, activism, and driving those.
And decreasing, like, decreasing.
Yeah, driving those down. Yep. Okay.
Because we've done a lot of classes working in this district to work that.
Yep. Perfect. Yep, I definitely might be told something on that, for sure. All right.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
So you're presenting these questions to see how well they resonate with the board, right?
Yeah.
And you're also looking to whittle them down?
Yeah.
How far are you planning on whittling them down?
Well, we'll see when we get to the end. I'd like to get us in around 18 and 20. So 18 to 20 questions in a 50-minute interview gives you a response. Roughly three to four minutes for each question. A little bit for some, a little less for others. And that generally tends to be about limited leg size. It works well if you get to know them and make the determination to whether or not you'd like to have them back for the second interview. The second interview is not too difficult or deeper into those areas in which you want more information on that particular matter. Okay? Okay. So moving into... So in that diversity, equity, inclusion, we'll stick with six and then we'll come up with another question here making sure that we address issues of equity, restored justice, activism, driving those numbers down, something along those lines. I'll take a look at what we have and I'll come up with something and get that in there for your approval. Okay. Looking at interpersonal. So earning trust in previous positions, empathy, what all does it have in our schools, culturally competent, what that means to you, how you demonstrate this characteristic, challenges that you experience in bringing out a diverse group of people, consensus on a difficult issue, how to drive leadership, open the outcome, how you maintain visibility, accessibility for staff, parents, and community groups, challenges you face, experiences, mistakes, failures, what did you learn, how did you buy what you learned, professional life, and when you had a test of your true personal integrity. Name the consequences and how you dealt with that. What's in this fashion interpersonal plans outside of that?
I like number 11, number 13, and number 14.
I said 10, 11, and 14. We were close then.
I like 11, 12, and 14. You kind of not to be a superintendent at all.
So we're not really going to be enough.
I like 8, 11, 12.
Okay. Okay. In the area of management and decision-making, number 15, how you recruit development and advocacy. Give us an example, why you've done this in the past. Number 16 talks about engaging and affirming staff members. Seventeen talks about going about decision-making controversial issues. Eighteen talks about budget development. Nineteen talks about development and implementation of a once-specific program change initiative or processes in use, how it evolved. What comes out of this area of management and decision-making?
I like 17, 18, and 19.
Right. Me too.
Okay. Anything else in management and decision-making? As you look at this area around labor relations, tell us about your involvement in collective bargaining, personal treaties, contract issue in your district, your involvement in a revolution, describing those challenging negotiations you conducted, what was the challenge involved which negotiated techniques most effective and what were the results. So this is two sides at the same point. I mean, they're both getting at the same thing just for preference as to go over either one of these. Do you like more one than the other?
I like 21. I like that first one.
21?
I like 21, but I also like the first sentence of 20.
All right. I will take that and make some adjustments to question 21. Can I pass it? All right. In this area of board relations, the practices and procedures do you or would you use to keep your board informed? Should superintendent on behalf of district administration make a considerable recommendation on all issues? Whether the important issue is creating a good board or superintendent relationship, how you facilitate that relationship, how well or how willing you can take this board, and then what does an effective relationship between the board and superintendent look like and how do you cultivate such a relationship? Any of these come out at you? Again, a lot of them are similar and what they're asking is just a little difference in the way you're...
I like number 23 and 26.
Right.
I like 26.
I like 25 and 26, but they're essentially my questions, so I can technical through the rest.
Okay.
Seems like 25 is pretty important.
Okay. This last, second last area here is around professional background. 27, what do you need skills or leverage to be a representative position and how will our district be served by this? 28, tell us about your previous professional experiences in education and how this influenced you as a leader. And then describe your experiences in education, advocacy, local, state, or national level. Anything in those three come out at you?
So I couldn't decide between 27 and 28, but I liked 29.
Okay.
I agree. I feel like 27 and 28 could be one question.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I feel like 27 and 28 could be one question. Smush it.
Okay. All right. Ahead in the closing, so the closing is a matter of preference. It's either, I think, you can make a closing statement or an opportunity for them to ask a question of the board. Do you have a preference one way or the other?
I like a closing statement. I keep, it kind of sums up your desire and, you know, that's just... I have a closing statement.
Does it have to be one or the other?
It doesn't necessarily have to be one or the other. A lot can depend on where we are in time. So if they, you know, if they have a little bit of time, then usually done asking a question will give, you know, maybe give an opportunity to ask after answering that question that they asked. If we can shorten time and usually have to use them to make closing statements and just kind of pull it out, you do a little more.
Any interview I've been in, one of the last things they ask, do you have any questions for us?
I agree. I think 30 should stay.
Okay.
But also, there is that. Do you have anything you'd like to say? In case you didn't hit on it with the question or something like that, you'd like to address something.
Okay. Okay. So next step to this, what I'd like to do is I will start to put together an interview guide and we will give you questions some more. If you have some additional questions that you'd like to submit or if you have some other ideas, I would welcome those. We don't, we have some time to move out on the interview. First round of interviews aren't until the 10th of April. So we have some time to go over these questions and just kind of find through. But now I got an idea of kind of where you are as a board so you can start to work on finding that interview guide. And then as you start to come up with additional material, please send it my way and we'll go from there. I will send you kind of a mock-up interview guide sometime before the end of the week. And then take a look at that and start to submit your all ideas as you... Okay?
Yeah. So one of the, like, question I'm coming as I look through this, I think I realize that of the different sections, the management and decision-making section for me is the one that I most like. I want as many of those questions as possible. I was surprised about other people sort of the sections where almost every question seems pretty good.
I agree, that's a really, really important question. I don't know that, just for the pure nature of time we could ask them all. It is definitely something we need to focus more closely on, I think, in second round interviews and we make sure that we get our, you know, we look at that kind of, you know, because that's key to successful leadership in my, in the way to manage a basic program.
Sure. So the, you know, as we discussed, you know, the first round is the same set of questions for every candidate, same setup, same structure, and that's to be the playing field so that we have a good base room to judge. That second round gives us an opportunity. After we've done the first round, we'll talk to each and candidate's interview. We will talk about the things that we heard that we liked and we'll talk about our own, okay? Our wonders are, these are the things that we wonder about that candidate. So I wonder what their lack of experience in school finance is going to look like as they come to your panel. I wonder about their lack of background in curriculum. I wonder about the fact that they've never been a superintendent before, those kinds of things. Then we'll take a look at those second round questions. The second round question will be a combination of those wonders so that we can get a better idea of where they are, those things that we have an issue with. And then also, if we've heard things in the first round that we want a little more detail on, maybe they talked about a program that was very successful and you want a little more detail about that program, their experience with that program, how it was possible they worked for that program, clarity on something. So maybe they said something in the first round and you're not quite sure what they were trying to do at. And so you'd really like to kind of dig deep on that in the second round, okay? And then if anything kind of comes up during your reference checks that you'd like to dig deep on, you know? So what are your references told me about a time issue, X, Y, Z? Tell us more about that, okay? So that's what the second round is. The second round is definitely different for each candidate. We can take with questions specific to that candidate and make sure that we get the information that we need to make our decision for our next superintendent. Okay? Any other questions about the question? This is the process. You will continue to work on this process so that you're happy with the interview question for your third round. All right? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
So before I found out that what we have on our shopping lists here didn't matter, the website that you've got for superintendents to shop for job positions, I don't know if you had given that out earlier, but I found it very interesting to look at what other people were posting in terms of some of the things that they had could have been very good for our list. So I don't know if you posted that before, but if other people may find it and take us to take a look at what other people, what other school districts were posting for their survey.
Are you talking about the selection criteria?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, so we post the selection criteria for all the searches that we do and all that is, you know, the material from the surveys, the material from the face-to-face, who you're going to add. You know, we talk about that as a board. We kind of, you know, agree that this is a selection criteria. And there'll be some similarities from, you know, from some boards and some of the districts. They'll be looking for some of the same things. They'll be looking for some different things. But there is some variance between those, for sure.
And some of these shopping lists that they produce already have calendars on. So by this date, we're going to have interviews. This is going to be our second interview and whatever. Do you already have a calendar?
Yeah.
Did you already send it out?
Yeah. Months ago.
Is there any chance you could send it out again?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Absolutely.
That's for sure. Okay. So to that point, first round interviews are set for April 20 and the 21st, second on April 27th. And then if you do not make a decision on April 27th, then I have down that you're many more than me on the 10th. Will be your next opportunity to make a decision if you don't make one on the night of the second interview on 27th. But yes, I can definitely send that out. Okay? Alright, so I ask you all to take a look at the application materials and come up with your list of six to eight candidates that you would like to have a conversation with. What I would like to do is I have a spreadsheet on the property that I can tally your votes. I'd like to get all of your lists and then once we tally all those together, we'll see where we are and we'll go from there. So sometimes this comes out and the board kind of coalesces around the same six to seven candidates. And it's pretty clear, as you all, you all do want to have an interview. Sometimes there's a little bit of variance and so we can maybe identify three or four of those that you all kind of came around with. And then after that, it kind of gets a little worky, so we can dig into that. So let's start with where we all are. We'll see where that leads us and then we'll go from there. And, and any questions or concerns for that? Okay, I'm just going to start with them in the order that I have them on my spreadsheet and go across. So when I call your name, if you can give your list and if you could, preferably if you could give it to me and help develop the order on the way down, just the number. But don't put a order on the way down, because that's how I have my list set up, is on the way down.
No, I can write them down, that's okay.
That's okay. And if not, then just give me the number, let me find it, and then I'll, I'll follow you to the next one.
Okay.
So I have Lisa on my sheet first. So Lisa, if you could give me one number, please?
Just one number?
The start.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Okay, and your next?
Twenty-seven.
And your next?
Eighteen.
Okay?
Four.
Okay?
And ninety-two.
And we're getting back to you?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-six, twenty-seven, eighteen, four, and ninety.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, and Jack? Seventy-two? Seventy-two, okay, ninety-two? And ninety-five? Ninety-five. Okay, uh, we're getting back to you. Seventy-two, ninety-two, and ninety-five, correct? Okay? Jack?
I have eight, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, sixty-two?
Okay?
Seventy-six?
Seventy-six, one minute. Okay?
Twenty-one.
Okay?
Ninety-three.
Okay?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, okay?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Okay?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yes.
Alright. We're getting back to you. Sixty-two, twenty-one, forty-nine, eighteen, thirteen, seventy-six, forty-eight, and ninety.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Evelyn?
Okay, um, sixty-two.
Okay?
Seventy-two.
Okay?
Ninety-two. I have two last question marks.
Okay.
I'll say eighteen.
Eighteen. Okay?
Thirty-six. And...
Thirty-six, okay?
Yep, and, um... Eighty-six. This was hard.
Eighty-six. Okay, thank you. Jim?
So I'm looking at two. Fourteen.
Alright, hold on one second, please. Two, okay, fourteen.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
And forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Okay? Is that it?
Yes.
Alright, we're getting back to you, please. Uh, two, fourteen, thirteen, and forty-eight.
Yes.
Okay? Cherry?
Ninety-two, and that's it.
Okay? And Rebecca?
Sixty-two? Thirty-six?
Thirty-six, one second, please. Okay, thirty-six, okay.
You got sixty-two, thirty-six, um, okay, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight. Okay, one second. Okay?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, okay?
Eighteen?
Okay?
Thirteen?
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Alright, we're getting back to you. Sixty-two, thirty-six, thirty-eight, twenty-seven, eighteen, and thirteen.
Yes.
Okay. And then here? Okay. So looking at this, I have two that received four votes. And that would be eighteen and ninety-two. So I think that we should move eighteen and ninety-two forward for sure. I have three candidates.
You said eighteen and ninety?
Eighteen and ninety-two.
Okay, eighteen.
Yep. I have three candidates that received three votes. Sixty-two, thirty-six, and thirteen. So I think we should move those three forward as well. Again, that would be sixty-two, thirty-six, and thirteen. I then have three candidates that received two. That would be seventy-two, twenty-seven, and forty-eight. So as it sits now, you have five. So my question to you is, do you want to move forward any of those three candidates or all three of those candidates that received two? Or do you think that receiving four or three should be kind of your denominator?
So if we move, so if we do the two, the two that got two votes, that would give us five candidates?
No, that would give you, if you moved up to two, uh, that would give you eight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think eight's too much. But that's just my opinion. I would go with the will of the board. Some have to be much better in person than they are on paper.
Just to make sure I was probably, so is, when we, when we were talking about the people who just received two votes, that was just two people who got to jump number seventy-two and forty-eight?
Um, no, the three, there are three that got two votes. It was seventy-two, twenty-seven, and forty-eight.
So what, but I know the last time we did that, we did five or six. I think it was five. Six with the six, it's been a while. Um, what's... What's a good number?
Six is usually, six or seven is usually where I would.
Eight's not unheard of?
Eight is not unheard of. Um, it will be two nights of four in reason. Um, I mean, the, the bigger thing here is that, um, I mean, technically only two candidates got a majority award. Okay, and then after that, we have, uh, three candidates that got just one less than the majority award free. Um, and then after that, we have, uh, you know, three candidates that only had a support of two board. So I think the fours and the threes are definitely worth moving forward. And then whether you actually or want to move through those that receive two votes, I think it's up to you as a board to decide.
So, so I have another question.
Yeah?
Is it common practice in professional studies to, um, include references that are five or six or seven years old? Um, because some of those reference letters are valid. And also in cover letters, I have a problem with, I don't even know which candidate, there were actually two candidates here, that their cover letters aren't even accurate with our current board. And I can't remember which candidate it is. One of them addressed our, the board members by name and position. That has completely changed. One of the board members in that cover letter no longer sits on the board. And the other one talked about bringing a certain program to record again that we haven't got. So am I being nitpicky? Am I being nitpicky?
Yeah, I wondered when they had applied. Like, I wondered if that person had applied before the election. I don't know.
Yeah, well, so that's what I'm concerned. So this, this posting was, was January fourth, which would have been, um, before your election. And if they, if they both, I'm sorry, it was before your story, not your election, but it was before your, your organization meeting. Um, so there's a possibility they applied early. There's also a possibility, sometimes, and I don't know that this happens here, but sometimes the time between the organization meeting and when your website is updated, if there's a lag there. So if they pull information off your website before that is updated, that's a possibility as well.
But we hold our organizational meeting in the summer, at the start of our school year.
Okay, but you had an election in November?
Correct.
So if it already changes.
But.
That's okay. He spelled my name wrong in that anyway, so I mean, it's not, we're not doing anything wrong with that.
I, maybe I'm just being nitpicky. But this, I think that if you want this job, you need to be very current.
Sure.
On the, I'm, you know.
Evelyn, I, I agree with you. I agree with you one hundred and fifteen percent. And every time I talk to the candidates, I implore them to make sure their materials are up to date. Now, the reference letters, I, you know, ideally, a little more recent than five or six, but five or six isn't bad. When I see ten, fifteen-year-old ones, then I have a, then I have a problem. Five or six years isn't awful. Um, I encourage candidates to get letters of reference, and I, I encourage them to give them a good reference. Because I think you continue to use them. As long as that person's okay, we continue to give them a good reference. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, you know, for every job that they apply for, they have to upload a different cover letter for every job that they apply for. And the reason we do that is because I want them to upload an appropriately detailed letter specific to the job that they have applied for, but unfortunately, I can't control it.
Well, then one of the people we picked, that's in our top five, has a wrong school district in their honor.
And so, you know, I, I understand that. I also would have, I would hate for you to miss, um, a great candidate. Because, and you know, the other thing for this stuff really, honestly, is it really speaks to the importance of having someone as great as Jacky, as an administrative assistant. Because they're the ones that text those mistakes that come out of superintendent all the time. Right? And I, I say that happily, Jeff, I say that seriously as well, is that a great administrative assistant makes a superintendent look even that much better. And so, um, but I would hate for you to pass on a really good candidate because they were, um... Because their skills were not as stellar as they could be. And I, I trust you when I tell you, I quote him up to the best of my ability, um, but, you know, there's only so much that I can do.
Sometimes I'm just a mean old lady.
Yeah, no, me, I, I, sometimes I'm a mean old man with some of these candidates.
And if there was some errors, they, I mean, if they were students, they wouldn't get a passing grade on the, on the thing. So I mean, that's what this is.
And I, and I, I see, I see much more egregious.
Okay.
Yeah. I see it really, and I, yeah, yeah.
Reference letters mean nothing to me.
I agree.
I haven't written anything to get rid of one of our stu-, our superintendents.
You would have said that superintendent wasn't one of the.
Oh, you bet your butt, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't mean that, I don't mean. A, 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 a school board that wants to get rid of a superintendent, they're going to write anything.
Okay, Jack? I have a question.
Yeah?
Um, I don't know how to word it, but I'm going to try to be, another great candidate. At one of the other meetings, you said that candidates should approach you.
Yes.
Was that from the time that they posted the position, or was it from the start of the, from whenever we had them open?
I mean, they, they should, they should, if they're, if they're considering themselves, I mean, if they're going to be a candidate in the school regardless of when it was posted, they should approach you.
Yeah, I think someone should be removed from those. Because they approached members of the board one-on-one.
From the minimum agency.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, you know, that's really up to you as a board to decide. I'm going to handle that. What, what I.
I, I would like that for you. You said that it's not right.
Exactly, what, so what, what it is is, you know, all interviews need to help in an open community like this, okay? If a board member has a conversation with a superintendent candidate, that could be construed as a contribution, and that could be then construed as a liability for the open community.
Well, they approached every board member one-on-one.
So the reason that I tell you with board members that is because I would encourage, and I'm sure I probably did, I would encourage you to then remind the person that they need to contact me and then encourage you to then end the conversation. So I don't control what people do and who they call. We put it in our postings that applicants should not meet up with board members. We educate board members that you should not have those conversations with the applicants, and if they call you, you're going to be directed to me. Um, and so I, you know, it's going to be up to you as a board. If you think that, that someone has crossed that line and is enough for you to not want to consider that person as a, uh, you know, as applicant, that's completely up to you. The board has to decide.
Well, more than one, more than one line has been crossed, and I think number thirteen should come off.
I don't know how, um, complaining to me to speak here, because I, I would like to understand where, what lines were saying that crossed to remove this person. Um, personally, based on that context of the position from which they're applying for this position, it is not my perception that lines are crossed, and I don't want to be dismissive of other people's concerns that we can... I don't know if we're allowed to speak more blatantly about.
That's where kind of a great area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So this person sent multiple emails to the board via, you know, had supporters send multiple emails to the board via our board email prior to this even being posted.
And then was trying to approach each individual?
Yes, so.
I guess, I think that's in the narrative, that like, once it's been articulated that that's not how the process works, that this person has not been doing it, and I don't think it's, to me, it isn't a disqualifying issue that this person had the misperception that, that's how God, he would have been able to play that I have.
So what, what I would say about that is, um, you know, you can't control what the public does. And if the public wants to lobby you for a particular candidate, I mean, that's kind of goes with the, with the gig, you know, of a board, a board member. You're going to get those people that are going to lobby you to hire somebody that they really believe in?
Or lobby against someone?
What's that?
Or lobby against someone?
Or lobby against someone, absolutely. Absolutely, I guarantee you that as soon as we release this list of names, okay? There's a entire, you know, the most chance that you're going to be emailing some people that have had experiences with that candidate, and they have a either incredibly great thing to say to you about that candidate or incredibly negative thing to say about that candidate, and they will let you know. And all I ask of you is if you get those to forward them to me so that I can do my best to vet them out. So Danielle can speak from experience. When Danielle was on her Board of Education and they named their applicant. When Danielle was on her Board of Education, and they named their applicants that they were gonna call for interviews, their board was inundated with emails from community members and interest groups that had a particular candidate that they didn't want to applaud, or that they wanted to destroy. And so, that's just part of the process. And it's not a pretty hard process, um, but it is a part of the process.
So, how do you handle a smear campaign against a specific candidate?
Yeah.
How many personally?
So, what I would...
Our consultants.
Right, so, if, you know, if those emails are forwarded to your sent to me, that I do have asked about things that are in there. And if there is no basis for those, then I will just remind you as a board that, you know, there doesn't seem to be any basis for these, and I will let you as board members determine what you wanna do with that information, whether you want to ignore it or accept it as fact. I mean, that, that's what we have to do as a board. I will do what I can to vet it out as best I can. If they say, I had a candidate that was accused of doing something, I called every reference to that candidate. I called that candidate's current supervisor, I called the candidate's former supervisor. I can find nobody that can corroborate the story that had been told to the board. All I can do then is report back to the board member that I did everything I could to find someone that corroborated the story. I can find someone that can corroborate the story. So now, I'm gonna leave it up to you as a board member to determine whether or not you wanna view the story, or if you wanna think, well, that was probably someone that did an accident. I had an ex-spouse of a candidate that decided, they needed to let the board know how awful that person was in their years of marriage, and how they could believe that that board does ever want to consider hiring that as a superintendent.
I guess that was a really hostile divorce.
Right, so, I'm gonna leave it up to you as a board to determine as to whether or not you wanna take their ex-spouse's word as reason to not hire that person.
And you, you can tell it to the source. Hey, this is...
For the best of my ability, but I can also tell you that you get, you will get emails from temporary contacts that people set up, explicitly for the emailing of that particular email, and that can then go to the board. So...
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Was it written somewhere where a candidate with a position should not notify anybody or make contact or whatever? It does not appear to be a part of your voting. So, the, when I do stuff, I tend to try to be as fair as possible. And in this discussion, it's the same sort of thing. So, this individual that made contact, it's not written that she or he can't do that. Yet, we have another candidate who applied, does not meet the requirements, and I'm told that it's up to the board whether to accept them or not.
Yes.
This is written. The other, in terms of behavior, is not written. So, equal time, and in terms of fairness, when it comes down to the time when you decide, as you say, the board determines what they wanna do, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely, it is ultimately board decision as to whether or not you want to either approve or disapprove of those candidates based on their behavior. Absolutely.
And running people down, this is a form of doing it.
It is, absolutely.
So, if I could... Do we have a five or eight, or somewhere in the middle?
Yes, and I turn it back to, are we, are we confident in the five that we have personally, if we're doing this? That, we have one meeting of one, okay? We have a thirty-five million dollar budget, and we, we're investing the money to look for talent. And is it advantageous for us to do the minimum, or listen to what ideas and the talent that's out there? So, in terms of eight, you said that, you know, it's not a hurdle for six or seven. Why not listen to eight? It really doesn't hurt. It's well worth our investment of time to listen to these people. Okay?
See, that's how I feel, again, I said to the board.
Yeah? Absolutely.
I'm happy with the top five.
I vote five.
Five.
My gut instinct is also five.
We have to make a roll call, it seems like, you know, this...
No, it's, it's, if those are five, if you'd like to recap, I'll recap those five. So, my next question to you would be, um, if of those five, one or two of them do not accept the interview, are we going to then be okay with three or four applicants? Or would we then not have discussion, and possibly reaching out to one of those, or all three of those candidates that only achieved two votes?
I'd like to, gonna be before that two won, and go to the next one, maybe more, maybe a couple more interviews.
This is their way to let the, um, three candidates know that they could be given an interview?
So, I would confirm, right, I would confirm with the five first.
Okay.
If all five of them accept, then I would send an email out to the remaining thirty candidates, because they're thirty-five candidates. I will send an email out to the remaining thirty to let them know that the board has not decided, or has decided to not move them forward in the process. But I will send that email, it's like a confirmation from the five to like, interview, that they have accepted the interview, okay? So, once those five have accepted an interview, then I'll send an email to the remaining thirty that the board appreciates their interest in the job, although the board has decided not to move forward, and then we move forward with interviews for those five candidates. Okay?
In my opinion, if the target is like six to seven people, and so we're at, now we're at five or eight, and so we pick five, I feel like if even one of the five candidates doesn't confirm the interview, I potentially likely add in all three of the, of the folks who will get two votes. Um, or for us to all each remove those three candidates, and then come with our, like, time to, and then narrow that down. But if we lose even one, it would be my preference to add in.
And, and I am more than willing to do that, but I will issue one point. And I caution you is, there is a better-than-average chance that, uh, some, if not quite a few, of the applicants are currently lobbying to me. And one of the first questions they will ask me is, was I one of the two?
Do they know their numbers?
No, they do not know their number. But, um, they, they understand the process. And if they're getting a phone call, uh, you know, they may ask me, so how many votes did I get? And if they find out they only got two, they may do nothing to come into an interview just because they don't feel that they got the support. And so, that's another one of the reasons that the fours and the threes, they know they at least have a majority, or closer to a majority of the board, would like to see them interviewed. The twos are kinda, you know, not quite there yet. And so, there's a good possibility that when I reach out to those twos, they may say, well, was I one of the twos that's not even talking about it in the meeting? Because if I am, I'm all set. So, just to put it out there, there's not, now, I would always encourage them to take an interview, because I would have a discourage them to take interviews, I think it's always an opportunity for them to show you who they are. And you, you know, you may see one of those twos, and, and they may knock your socks off, right? Um, so, I would always encourage them, but sometimes they just may decide, no, I'm all set. So, just putting it out there, okay?
Okay.
All right? So, next steps, I will contact these five. Once I get confirmation, one way or the other, those five, I will then put together a press release, send that to Jackie, so Jackie can read that, and that will just know that these five people have accepted an interview with the board. I will then work with those five to start scheduling the interviews. I will schedule three interviews on April twentieth, I will schedule two interviews on April twenty-first.
You have twenty-first or twenty-seventh, I believe is what you said.
I have...
I don't know, I was good, John.
I've got twenty and twenty-first.
Okay, when, when you said it, I...
I'm sorry, okay, yeah, I got twenty and twenty-first, sorry, I missed it. Twenty and twenty-first.
See, you said three on the twentieth.
Yes, three on the twentieth and two on the twenty-first. I'm going to schedule that for six, seven, and eight o'clock on the twentieth, six and seven o'clock on the twenty-first. Okay? After these, those interviews on the twentieth, you will have an opportunity, uh, actually, at the, uh, at the end of the third interview, you will have an opportunity to recap all three of those interviews. On the second night, we will recap those two interviews, and then we will discuss who wants to come in for a second round of interviews on April twenty-seventh. Now, it is my anticipation that we will do these interviews face-to-face, and then are you planning on broadcasting much like we're doing tonight as well? Or are you anticipating how long people will come in to the meeting if they want to participate in that?
So, I'll say, first of all, personally, I'm not interested in a candidate who does not want to come face-to-face.
No, no, I'm not, that's, yeah, I'm talking about, uh, community members, that. Are you planning how long community members, that? Well, I see at that point, we...
We've heard open meeting, huh?
Yeah, at that point, we know the... I don't know what the jurisdictions are going to be at that point, right now, they're at twenty-five. Um, but then I'll also hear that technically, as long as you can promise six feet of separation, then you can have as many people as you want, as long as you can promise them six feet of separation from ten people, and all that. So, this would be, and this would be appropriate. If that is the case, would you plan on still broadcasting or not, or don't you know yet?
Uh, it was, we haven't discussed it, uh, it's a matter of...
So, just something to think about. If you decide that you're gonna broadcast it, then we can put together a virtual feedback form that anyone that is watching the meeting can fill out. Anyone that's here can either, on their phone, fill out that virtual one as well, or I'll have paper copies as well. Um, so, just think about it, and then, you know, how we'd like to do it, if you wanted to broadcast it out, then we can do the virtual. If you're just gonna have whoever's here, if I'm the one that's gonna be able to see me, then I'll use the paper. So, nothing have to decide, and that's just something to think about. And then, again, if this is the appropriate venue, if you think that you, you can accommodate the number of people that want to potentially come in to see this, uh, if this is a big event for you, then that, this is comfortable. Okay?
All right.
Any other questions that I can answer for you tonight?
Questions for Mr. Bennett?
Danielle, can I get your last name, please?
Thunderbird.
Just like it sounds?
Yes.
As, as it's informed.
So, if you have any questions, anything comes up, and anything you think about, please feel free to reach out. I didn't want to have to talk to you about that. I will start for you to have that interview package for you. I will reach out to the five candidates, uh, tonight, and hopefully have that nailed down. And as soon as I have that nailed down, I'll send it down to you, and I'll let you know where we are. I'll give Jackie that press release, so she can read it. I'll start getting those interview times set. Once those interview times are set, I'll send out another press release to Jackie, so she can read that, and you should be good to go.
All right, Mr. Bennett, we have an amendment, uh, or an amendment to authorize you to contact these candidates, do you need that?
If you want, but if you don't have. If you would like to, we can, you can, uh, pass a resolution to reach out to candidates by number, if you wanna do that. But if you don't want to do that, it's totally up to you.
Who do you think, Mr. Vice President?
I don't know.
Yeah. Does anybody think we need to vote on a resolution?
I just wanted to make sure that it's fine.
Well, are we required to, it's on the agenda?
Yeah.
It might be good.
All right.
All right, so I'll leave it on the back to make sure we got it.
All right, let me read them, and then you can get more.
Absolutely.
Do I have a motion that the Board of Education authorized M.A.S.B. to contact the agreed-time candidates for an interview for the Record Union Superintendent? Eighteen, ninety-two, sixty-two, thirty-six, and thirteen.
So moved. Four.
Moved by Ms. Pryor, second amendment, Ms. Robinson, is that correct, Mr. Bennett?
It is.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Loyd?
I don't think number thirteen should stay on the list.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. We're gonna have a roll call vote, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Loyd?
No.
Ms. Bray?
Yes.
Chair Lutus, Mr. Osowski?
No.
Ms. Pryor?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries, board three. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Uh, Board of Education Communication Discussion?
To the chair?
Yes, Mr. Daley.
Point of information, who sets the board calendar to consider legally mandated considerations such as budget, or supervi-, superintendent evaluation?
We do.
So, when you say we...
The board?
Do we discuss it, or, because June thirtieth is the budget, and I'm not sure what the, there's three different calendars, right? And you can choose on how to evaluate your superintendent, but it has to be done.
So, we don't have to evaluate our superintendent because our superintendent's position is on June thirtieth? So, it's not required of evaluation?
Have you evaluated since last June?
Well, we can get in terms of superintendent, and then... We can clarify it.
Yeah, we need to clarify it, because again, if...
And even, and even with a regular superintendent, you only need to do it every other day. Well, we'll, we'll get the, the F, the full stat, and, and, whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, the budget, we always need for the budget in June, we need the June third, we set, uh, deadline. Interesting note on that is that the state doesn't set how much money they're gonna give us until October. But we have to have our budget in like, interviews, and we can't miss that day, so I'm confident that someone's gonna keep us all informed.
Right, so, also, um, in order to gather information from my position, I have been visiting other boards during the meeting, and also some of the schools. So, just to pass on, I went to the Presswood, Presswood School District meeting, and they had a hundred and sixteen new students, uh, mostly for the young degree. And, uh, they're also opening up a couple other facilities with the people that they have. They're going to have in L.A. trade, and I'll give it to the other buildings for. Also, with the annual evaluation reports, um, I was looking at the district percent of students who are proficient. What I was wondering, yes, is the benchmark evaluations for the school board, whatever they are, is it possible that somebody could come and explain to the board? Um, I don't quite understand the annual education report, because they're saying like, for a particular grade, we have thirty kids or less that end up getting evaluated, and we have a proficiency of fifty percent down to a single digit. And that just doesn't make sense. And the information that we received before, uh, that I received in January, I don't know if you've got it earlier when I was in the board, but the information about the failures and, uh, folks who weren't attending class, that information was like halfway into the school year. I was wondering if it's possible to get information about the condition of the school district a little bit more up to date.
All right, so I will ask Mr. Witt to, uh, provide someone to update the attendance and passing?
The benchmark evaluations, wherever they are. I see the annual evaluation report, but I'm wondering if there's more.
So, an end step, uh, who would like to add? A description of that, or an explanation of how that's done? That's what I heard you say, is that correct?
Correct, and again, any other benchmarks that are out there?
Could we also use an internal N.W.E.A. testing? That's not a, now we're facing that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Daley. Is there any other communication discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Osowski.
I'd like to congratulate Record Union, boys' basketball team, for the work's winning the Western Wayne Athletic Conference. If we can go any further, but I'd like to congratulate...
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there any other communication discussions? Yes, sir, Mr. Osowski?
I'd like to congratulate Redford Union Boys Basketball Team for the work to win the Western Wayne Athletic Conference. If we can go any further, I'd like to congratulate them.
Thank you, Mr. Osowski. Any further board communication and discussion?
To the chair.
Yes, Ms. Pryor.
I would encourage us to invite their coach, and some of them, to honor them like their football team. And also, I'd like to know, who set these cameras up in the room? And why is we're not aware of that? Who took it up on themselves to put these cameras?
I took it on myself, and it's under the open meeting deck.
Zoom covers us under the open meeting deck.
Anything comes under the open meeting deck, if somebody wants to tell.
All right, thank you. Is there any other communication discussion?